But I'm here for the community. Right now, we're at five members, but we're gonna be getting bigger. But yeah, anything that has to do with being a voice for our community and for our people, I'm all for it. So yeah, I'll pass my information out later if anybody wants to speak to me or ask what... We are a grassroots organization. And so everything that we do is from our heart to the people. So, as I say, power to the people. We say "Viva la causa!", but it's always power to our people, whether it be our immigrants, our children, our communities. I like to be present, so everybody knows me. You type in "Brownberry, Chicago", my face is everywhere. Nobody knows me, but when you meet me, you know me. So I'm very well-versed, very well-spoken, educated. And you always see me like this, just so calm. Very, very calm spirit. So yeah, anything you guys need from us, we do serve, observe, and protect. So our services are absolutely free. We do no charge. I mean, if you want to go, it's all up to you. But yeah, we protect any event that you may have you need protection, we do that. So if you guys are having a protest, we'd be glad to join in. But yeah, anything that has to do with anything around the school system, I like to be a voice. And I'm also a very gentle voice, but I get my point across. So yeah, that's us, and that's the Brownberry. I'm happy to be here to help you guys facilitate this.
Thank you. So I'm just gonna go over some basic instructions so people kinda know what we're getting into here tonight. And then, so my two colleagues to my right are helping with Spanish language interpretation tonight. That was the main reason we had to wait. I never like to make just one interpreter do anything. It's just not fair to them. And we had hoped to have ASL, just none of the agencies had anyone available on this date. We did try to reach out to community folks, couldn't get it for this date, hopefully for one of the future ones. I think the 26th, we have confirmed interpreters for ASL for that date. We are live-streaming this, and if there are questions that come up in the feed from the livestream from Facebook, which is where we're live-streaming to, during the second half, when we take kind of questions from the floor, we can take those questions as well, we can alternate. So basically, how this goes is pretty straightforward. These are your six candidates for Hammond...well, I'm sorry, your five candidates. We seem to have five candidates for Hammond School Board, School City of Hammond. Your election officially November 5th is, you know, when you can go vote on Election Day, but before then, you can also go vote early voting, which is what that piece of paper is, everybody should receive one. Those are your locations, times, dates, everything straight from Election Board and Election Board's number, so you can verify everything. What we're doing here tonight, we have basically a two-part question-to-answer situation. On the back of all of your programs, Audience/Community Member programs, you are going to see just the basics. So those are five prepared questions that we gave the candidates ahead of time. And so we have two rounds per each question that is prepared, and those two rounds, the first one, you know, Pete gives them an opportunity to opt-in right out the bat, and they get three minutes. Now, let's say they hear something that sparks something maybe they weren't planning on addressing that question, who knows? And they can initially opt-in, there's still a second round there with a final thought so that people can say, "Oh yeah, I do have something to say on this", but they get two minutes if they don't opt-in first round. Second half is all four questions. So I will come to you with a mic, and you get to say whatever you would like in terms of a question, but it has to be a question, it can't be a promotion of a candidate. And we're all adults here, except for the ones...oh, there are a few who aren't, but those aren't usually the question folks, and when they are, they're usually more well-behaved than the rest of us. So with that, I'm gonna have one of my two colleagues here kind of give you the gist of what I just said, instruction-wise.
Buenas tardes, en español?
Yes.
Buenas tardes, no sé cuántos de ustedes aquí hablan. ¿Cuáles hablan lo más puro español? Does everyone speak English? Because I mean, I facilitate the Spanish questions for everyone who doesn't, but did everyone understand what she just went through?
Yeah.
Okay.
I missed a few.
Básicamente van a estar haciendo preguntas a los candidatos. Hay cinco candidatos. Cada uno les van a dar dos preguntas y ya cuando...no puede ser nada...
Nothing that's... This is the emotional way.
Yeah. Nada de promoción de ningún grupo de ustedes, solamente son preguntas de la comunidad a ellos y van a estar tomando turnos. Y así van a regular y van a ciclar así. Así es como lo vamos a hacer, y luego la segunda parte va a ser preguntas que están llegando por Facebook o cualquier red social que tienen.
Chau. And candidates also received today the five prepared questions. And they also...so the way we're gonna do this with the interpretation, and I don't know, we didn't have a chance to talk too much about who's doing what comfort level wise, we'll figure it out as we go. How we're going to try to do it is gonna be simultaneous. So while you're speaking, because you have a three-minute chunk or a two-minute chunk, then somebody else is gonna also, and we'll see how that goes. And if it doesn't work because of technology or something else, we'll make it work somehow. But, so the questions on the back, we can start, try to get started. Okay. Okay. Let's get started with one of these prepared questions. And keep in mind, the way this process works, I ask the question, if you want to answer the question right away, first round, put your hand up. If you don't, don't put your hand up. And then after, and then I will go down the line in terms of who has stated that they want to answer the question, and we will go from there. So if you, and you have the option to not raise your hand for a question, if you just don't want to answer a question, you have no obligation. But again, after everybody gets, you know, who's raised their hand the first time, gets called on, then we'll go down the line. Because we're trying to do interpretation, because we're doing livestreaming several things, but also just for the sake of people being able to get information, we can't have any crossover or talking over or interrupting, we're just gonna have to do this in a very orderly fashion, and I know that we're all capable of doing that, so I have no worries in that department. All right, first question. "How will Hammond, how will you help Hammond students prepare for higher education given the changing high school diploma requirements?" Okay. I see three hands, I see Evangeline, Missy. Oh, you know what, guys? I forgot to do something. All of you are supposed to introduce yourselves, that's the problem. Exactly. So if we can take the mic first, you're all entitled to a three-minute intro, I am gonna try to time that, and we're gonna, you know, I'll just have to cut you off when you go too long. So, three minutes down the line, we can do it. Thank you.
Can you hear me? My name's Evangeline Stanford. I'm of course running for school board, along with everyone else here at this table. I have experience in finance and accounting. I've been a cost accountant, an auditor. I've done accounting for the last thirty, forty years, actually. I've done some K-12 software, I volunteer at multiple places, I have a passion for helping others, and when I started attending the school board meetings, my passion kicked in. I felt like it was something, it was a calling, and I needed to see what I could do to help the school board. I won't talk a lot about myself, because you need to keep moving, but I will answer the questions as we go on.
I'm Melissa Guerra, I am a parent. I have one of my own, a toddler. I have two currently stepsons in the School City and one who just graduated. I'm also, my husband and I are part of the PTA. I'm a former teacher, I'm a current bus driver, been doing that for ten years. So I've been in the schools a lot, and I was asked, and I said, "Okay, I'll throw my name in and sense doing that, I've been studying a lot and reading code and bylaws and all of the things that now make me have to wear glasses that I forgot." So that's a little bit about me, and like Evangeline said, I won't take up too much time, I'll answer the questions as asked tonight as well.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Alberto Cho, and I was born here in Hammond, and I live here in Hammond. I have a son currently in the school system of Hammond, a junior, and also have a son that graduated a couple years ago that went through our system here, School City of Hammond. And I have seen how things have been changing dramatically, and I personally, unfortunately, suffered a couple instances that I would not wish for other people to do, and because of that, I'm also a community activist. I've been involved with children, coaching, organizing parades and things like that. So I'm always out there, and that's one of the reasons that being a Latino organizer, I was asked by a lot of the Latinos that they feel that they don't have enough interpreters, they feel unrepresented, but like they said, people that I've talked to, they say, "If they don't come out of vote, then that's what they get", and I don't feel that's right. So I'm here to represent everybody on my personal job. I do safety, and I also do budget for the company operations. So I go through a private training, this is called lean training, where you learn to turn waste into profit. And we've done a lot of recycling and that type of things, and turn it into profit. I was, before that, I was a 911 dispatcher, so I'm real aware of everything that goes on in the community, so I always deal with people's lives and stuff like that through my whole life. And one more now than our children's lives. So I take a real high priority in everything that goes on in our community. So that's pretty much about it. Like I said, from anything else, I'll answer the questions. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisette Montanaz, and I'm running for school board. I'm a full-time mother of a child who is a teenager, attended Hammond Central Schools up until this August 19th, where I had to pull him out due to lack of special support. I am born and raised in Chicago, and I bought my first house here, researched the schools here twenty years ago. I wanted to give my son a better life, and due to affordable living, I was able to do it on my income alone. Also a caretaker, former caretaker and spouse of a wounded warrior veteran, so I was holding the fort. I would say that my experience in education as an education coordinator would bring a good balance to the school board. I have eleven years' experience working in education as education coordinator for International Union and Operation Engineers, Local 399, and that's where I learned all the ropes of administration, and basically working with student supports, admissions, budgeting, fiscal management, auditing, grants and funding, and in honor. We took on multiple tasks, they were unlimited, so I have experience in 401K, health and welfare, and membership, and anything that we can help each other with. Collective bargaining agreements, I've learned from some of the best. And so I can tell you, I'm also a property owner, Hammond, twelve years, and I look out for my community very much. I've been advocating for the parents for about eight years for two communities, in between Whiting and the City of Whiting and Hammond, Robertsdale, and I've extended my services on throughout Lake County. I help the, I, unlimited, not just Hispanics, I am bilingual, but I help them understand laws, like Code of Conduct, the bylaws, state, federal laws, anything I can do to help the parents protect their children and keep them in school. And so that's a little bit about me, and I do have excessive amount of data. I've worked for the US Census at the early age of twenty, and I've been experienced with collecting data for about twenty-one years. So that's a little bit about me, and I'll pass it on to Cindy. Thank you.
Thank you. First thing I'd like to do is thank the Gary Education Coalition, and it's Cosecha or Caseto for helping sponsor the event tonight. Again, Cindy Murphy, running for school board. I've had five children, putting them through the system here, I have six grandchildren.
You're good.
I've always been a volunteer, so whether it's chess, Legos, Science Olympiad, all those things out there, they're just my children, but everybody's children. So when Facebook was in its infancy, my kids, my number-one daughter came up with a Facebook site where it said, "Cindy Murphy, putting children first." So you can find me there and check out the issues I talk about in education. My children went to Harding, Scott, and Morton High School, where I spent most of my time, but as I was moving up through the PTA, I found there was a lot of inequities in our city. So I was one of the people that always spoke out for Eggers. At one time, Eggers actually had children taking their classes in the auditorium. And I kept saying, you know, "What are you doing?". I kept protesting, it's like, "You need to do something", and that was about a year and a half, and finally the superintendent came down and says, "Mrs. Murphy, you can stop, we're gonna put an addition on that building." After the referendum was passed in 2017, in 2018, I got the Hammond NAACP Keeper of the Dream Award, along with Rashad Amor Morris and Carlotta Blake Keane. So we got that, it's another thing where it shows that we go out there and put children first in all things. My passion is curriculum. I can talk curriculum with you all day, and making sure there's the rigor, and that's one of the things that people talk about, they're talking with us, is the test scores and things going on like that, but they need to understand how things have changed over the years and the standards brought to us by the state. So we have the good curriculum, but if we're gonna use the SATs, not such a good test to be using on our students. And that's, we need to get started because we need it going, so I'm done here.
Thank you, everybody. You can just keep the mic wherever it's at. I will repeat the question from last time. Apologies for the false start, not the first time, unfortunately. I get excited, I love stuff like this. And then, so I will, I will read the question first, we're gonna have it read in Spanish, and then, you know, when you hear it, raise your hand. Again, somebody may have changed their mind between this time and last time about whether what they want to answer first round, and then I will take note of who's gonna answer, and we'll proceed. All right, so our first question. "How will you help Hammond students prepare for higher education given the changing high school diploma requirements?"
¿Cómo ayudarás a los estudiantes de Hammond preparar por una educación más alta? Ya que los requisitos para lograr un diploma van a cambiar, ¿cuáles van a ser las cosas que van a ser para preparar a nuestros estudiantes?
See lots of false starts. So who's on deck first round? Who wants this one? I see Evangeline, I see Missy, I see Cindy, and yeah, let's start with Missy since she's nearest to Mike, and then we'll go to Evangeline, and then we'll go back down to Cindy.
I have prepared questions, I prepare answers to what I would say on task. So to help prepare Hammond students prepare for higher education given the changing high school diploma requirements, I would start by studying the changes once they're finalized. I'd request training for our admins, counselors, and teachers to make sure we are all on the same page of understanding so that we can help our students properly. I would also request meetings that parents can attend to ask questions and get the information they need to help their child. It will take teamwork to make sure our students get the required credits and hours to be able to apply for their choice of, for their school of choice if higher education is their desired path.
Lo que yo quiero hacer como candidato es tener juntas con los padres y maestros y los directores de las escuelas para tener todos acuerdos del plan que queremos tener para los estudiantes que quieren superar su educación a ir a universidad o colegio o lo cual quiera secundario que quieren ir.
The new diploma requirements have basically reduced the requirements for our students. I think our students deserve better, so I think that we need to give our teachers the tools so that we can try to make up that difference. When Purdue says they're not going to allow students into their college based on our diploma requirements, that's a problem. So if our children cannot meet the requirements to go to college, then we need to make sure that they meet those requirements to go to college. Keep in mind, not every child wants to go to college, so there is also the Career Center that we need to really push for those students who don't want a career going through college. Students can make, can have wonderful careers in the trades. And I went over there and visited the center for the first time, and I was very impressed with the kinds of courses that they offer, and I don't think that our children are getting exposure to that enough. So not only should we focus on how the diploma is affecting our children, but also think of what are the alternatives we need to consider that our children may, a different path that our children may want to follow.
Con este nuevo diploma han reducido los requisitos que los estudiantes necesitan tener para lograr la universidad, pero los maestros y nosotros necesitamos hacer la diferencia que les falta. Los colegios no quieren muchas de las cosas porque necesitan más requisitos. Los niños quieren seguir estudiando, unos quieren ir al colegio, otros quieren ir a escuelas técnicas. Y yo he ido a ver los cursos que tienen aquí de técnicos y a muchos no les ofrecen, y queremos darle todas las opciones a todos los estudiantes para que ellos pueden hacer su mejor decisión para ellos mismos propios.
I'm gonna be all over the place with my answer. I do not at all like the new diploma requirements, so it's gonna be tough for me to finish my answer in three minutes. The path to this current diploma started in the late 90s with the passage of Public Law 221. At that time, where the parents were out, we were out there pushing it and everything, but we didn't understand that the long-term plan of ALEC, A-L-E-C, wanted our students to produce schools to produce widgets and not critical and free-thinking students. Who is ALEC? ALEC is short for American Legislation Exchange Council. It's conservative bill made up of corporations, lawyers, and legislators, is a private, tax-exempt organization. ALEC writes a lot of major legislations that has passed here in Indiana, prisons, voting, education legislations. Many of these come from ALEC. ALEC doesn't represent us, they represent the corporations. In Indiana, education sponsored by them, the A to F grading school system, the third-grade reading test, IREAD, the timing of teachers' evaluations to students' test scores, the diversion of public funds to private schools, through vouchers into charter schools with little public oversight, the limiting of collective bargaining for teachers to salary and negotiations. Already, these changes that we're hearing of, the public universities have come out and said, "No. If these go through, these students, we're not gonna accept them when they graduate to come in here. These bar is way too low." The Indiana Legislative Black Caucus has already come out, and they said, "No, this needs oversight." So they've already done a second reading, and last week, they said, "Okay, we've got comment, and we're gonna go through it." While we were fighting back against this new diploma, School City of Hammond has maximized the teachers that are qualified to teach AP. Why? If you go to the IDU website, they have this stuff right here. They're expecting the ones on the honors diploma track to take four, and not just take four, pass them with a three or more. That is tough. Why do they think it's so tough there? So like other districts, we also need to have teachers that teach computer science. While we've had a little bit, it's now required. Every student must pass one computer science test. They'll now, they have to take two STEM focus sections. Another difficulty is our industry partners. School City of Hammond has a lot of them. They're connected with our area Career Center. But if a student has to have 100 hours under this new diploma thing, how are they gonna get that done? If every student has to do that? So my, in summary, we need to fight against this new diploma. We need to end it, we need to roll back to what we had, we need to let our teachers teach and trust them, and then we have to, if we can't get it done, then we're gonna have to attract the teachers that we need in order to do this new legislation. Thank you.
No me gusta este nuevo diploma. Este diploma es de los 90s, es de un partido político que se llama ALEC. Y básicamente es una corporación... Okay, una corporación de abogados que representa ese partido político, son de la prisión, de educación, representativos de la corporación y no es de nuestra gente. Ellos no representan lo que necesitamos la gente.
Los requisitos que han pedido para este nuevo diploma es como tener una, tomar una prueba de ciencia en la computadora. Un enfoque en ciencia, tecnología, matemáticas, ingeniería, pero no dan específicos de cómo. Tenemos aquí en la escuela ciudad de Hammond, patrocinado de industrias que nos ayudan con los estudiantes que quieren empezar a pensar en trabajar y echarle ganas. Lo malo de este nuevo diploma es que quieren 100 horas de trabajar antes de empezar a trabajar. Es imposible para un estudiante de la high school poder completar sus estudios, hacer estas horas de trabajo, y vivir su vida desarrollándose. Necesitamos que pensar en cómo lo vamos a hacer como una comunidad. En verdad, necesitamos que pelear contra esto. Ir a lo que los maestros saben hacer y darles el control para atrás en ese rol.
Thank you. Any final thoughts on this question from anyone who hasn't answered it yet? Okay.
Like she was saying, everybody brings something different to the table, and that's why I feel that whoever's gonna be the next person, we need to keep somebody with experience and somebody new. So to me, brings a lot to my head, and I feel that we are gonna have to find some type of way for our schools to be able to communicate with each student, and especially once they start high school, which way they wanna go. Like she was saying too, ACC, now everybody's gonna wanna go to college, so if somebody wants to go into trade, somebody wants to go into college, then we're gonna have to focus a little bit more on the students that want to do the higher education versus the ones that want to go into the trades, because we'll let the ones going to the trades follow the ACC, but the ones that do wanna follow to a higher education, then we have to, it has to be a little bit more... then we have to, has to be a little bit more focused. We'll have to find some type of counselors to guide them. But like she said, the things are gonna change, we need to prepare our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Todos tenemos algo que podemos contribuir a las escuelas y la comunidad. Lo que yo pienso que debemos de hacer es hablar con todos los estudiantes y pensar en lo que ellos quieren. Quieren ir al colegio, quieren ir a escuela técnica para estudiar un específico trabajo. Hay niños que debemos de estar hablando con ellos y mandándolos al ACC para empezar ese desarrollo. También empezando con los estudiantes que quieren enfocarse en una educación en el colegio o universidad, hay que hablar y estar enfocados con un counselor que les puede preparar el camino para llegar allí. Bien cierto, necesitamos que prepararnos todos para ataclear este problema.
Thank you, everybody. Um, I did wanna know... Oh, I didn't see your hand, okay. So in future, if we, if we cannot snatch the mic up so quick, is it, that's probably why I didn't see your hand. So yes, please raise your hand, wait to be acknowledged, and then we can... Thank you, everybody. All right, please go for it.
Well, I, I also, I have to agree with Cindy with this one, that we need to fight that one. I'm pretty confident that things are gonna change regardless the governor. And so I'm hoping that there are gonna be some changes to this diploma. However, um, I, I, you know, with the diploma requirements, I would say helping the Hammond students just prepare with the, uh, with getting familiar with the designations and the seals and choosing career pathways. Overall, I don't think that this law is gonna stick, even though I believe they're deciding in December sometime. Um, so I'm hoping for the best with that. And I think we need to fight that law because I'm not in approval with that. That would keep them very limited. It would require the universities to all get on par as well. And they will not have options to go out of state to say Boston. And they're not gonna accept them with that kind of diploma. So I'm absolutely against it. Thank you.
Yo estoy de acuerdo que necesitamos pelear este nuevo diploma. Lo que necesitamos hacer es ayudar a los estudiantes de Hammond a preparar, a escoger, um, lo que van a hacer después de la escuela, su vocación. Yo no pienso que esta ley va a tomar, no, no creo que va a pasar. Necesitamos pelear la ley porque los estudiantes, lo que necesitan es algo que va después de que gradúan, lo pueden usar para universidad. Van a ver varias universidades que no van a poder aceptar ese tipo de diploma. Lo que necesitamos es un diploma que todas las universidades puedan, puedan, este, alejar porque no es, bueno, no es justo que nomás los estudiantes de Hammond tienen este tipo de diplomas. Ella está de acuerdo con ella y...
También dijo que con el nuevo gobernador la mejor manera de buscar cambios con los requisitos de la diploma, pensando en qué tipo de carreras quieren ir, qué sé ellos va a tener la diploma, el camino de educación que quieren ir en esa forma. Y no estamos de acuerdo con eso que, que posiblemente las universidades los pueden rechazar después de tanto desempeño que han dado en su diploma.
Thank you. Very noisy mic. Oh, no, we, we don't... Can, okay. So the final thoughts is the so-called rebuttal, to clarify, right? And this is outlined in the program, it's outlined in the guide, it's outlined in the stuff provided ahead of time. There are two rounds for each of these. So if you have not spoken on a question already, and second round when I say final thoughts, that's when you raise your hand. And, I mean, if people up in this crowd wanna change something about these rules, I'd entertain it, but...
So you spoke for three minutes, you don't get to do the final thoughts.
No. Yeah, okay. But, yeah, so it's just an outline. Three minutes is the, the first, the first shot you get to the question, you get three minutes, right? Cause you're deciding right when there, you wanna say something about it. If, you know, you waited until the final thoughts, you get two minutes because you've had that whole extra time to thinking about your answer, you've been having extra time to formulate things. The designer is to be fair and accessible, right? So like some people just need extra time with the question because of how they think, how they process information, language stuff, all of that. So I'm just trying to accommodate different styles of how brains work. All right, uh, before we go on to the next question though, I do wanna say, those parts of your packets where you see there's some blank spaces. I did bring pens, I forgot to distribute them, they are up here if you want. Those are for if people wanna take notes. I tried to leave, you will see that all the candidates have little blurbs in their pictures, links, QR codes, ways you can get involved. And I also wanna thank everybody. Nobody here tonight that I have seen brought any identifiable campaign swag or merch or anything, which is great, because we, oh... I know if somebody would, it'd be you, right? Anyway, uh, all in good fun. Um, so, uh, we try to keep things fair with, give people, you know, their little bits in, in the program like that. But we also wanted to provide little spaces. So if you hear something, you hear, you know, a candidate say something you really like, don't like, you wanna look into more, there's opportunities for you to look into stuff after. All right. Question two. I think we're gonna do better on, on things this time, guys. I think we're gonna get the hang of it. Learning often happens while you're doing, right? Uh, with enrollment down and the existing referendum ending, what future cost-saving measures would you like to implement? Who would like to take this first round? I see Evangeline, I, in a second.
Okay.
Okay, I see Evangeline, I see Missy, I see Pedro, I see Lizette, I see Cindy. Okay, everybody wants a first round, yes, now transition.
Con el, con el desarrollo bajo y el referendum que existe, ¿cuáles futuros ahorros, ahorros medidas, este, implementarán? Para, uh, para el dinero.
Ready? Okay. Um, so when the cuts were made back in April and May, they already took into consideration the $15 million referendum. So you couldn't do that halfway. You can't hire people for the fall and then not have the money to pay for them the second half. So that's why so many jobs were cut. Cause we knew we're not gonna have the money to pay for them the second half. So the referendum is taken care of through the '24, '25 school year. What was not expected was the bigger loss of students, which just came out. So the ADM just got certified, we're expecting, we already expected $300, $300 student loss. That was worked into the revenues for the whole year. But when they calculated again, they're expecting another $5.5 million. So what the, the DOE does, in November and December, they chew up. So everybody's been looking at the cash flows at the second meeting of the month. And the cash flows are looking decent, they're starting to have some cash balances. But when they, soon as that certified ADM goes through, November and December are gonna change. They're gonna be reduced by $2.5 million. Then for each month going into '25, we're gonna see those reductions for those months too, reflected in the loss of students. So the cuts that are going to be made will be for the following school year. And that was talked about in the meetings in the spring and with the final things. We could see that we were good until the end of 2025. But we were worried what was gonna happen in the '25, '26 school year. That's where the five-year protections came in. Unfortunately, 90% of our budgets, those are personnel costs. That's salaries, that's benefits, and the whole thing. So it's gonna be difficult. So I was the first one, I kept, as soon as I talked about closing schools in January, I said, "There's not gonna be a school desert here in Hammond." And I lobbied hard to make sure that Franklin would not be closed. And instead, I let the school get closed in my neighborhood. So we can make sure that we didn't have a school desert up in North Hammond. So I don't know what's gonna happen. That's gonna be a bunch of, with the board, it's gonna come back and forth, but it's probably gonna be some type of personnel. We can probably absorb the loss of students and keep the schools intact for another year. But if we keep losing this many, we're gonna see more of school reductions. Thank you. Thank you.
Cuando cortamos muchas de las posiciones en abril y mayo y cuando cerraron las escuelas, tomamos en cuenta el dinero que teníamos perdido. Por eso cortaron muchas posiciones en el año del '24 al año del '25. Lo que no esperábamos fueron los estudiantes que no regresaron a nuestro distrito. Perdimos en total, ya que contaron los estudiantes que quedaron hace poco en el día de contar el desarrollo, 5.5 millones de dólares para el distrito. Y el dinero se estaba viendo bien hasta que contamos estos estudiantes. En los meses de noviembre y diciembre, vamos a ver que estamos, que nos falta 2.5 millones de dólares. Y para el año 2025, estábamos seguros que podíamos llegar al fin del año sin perder mucho. Sí reducimos muchas cosas, pero lo que estamos pensando es que ya en el próximo año es donde estamos con las preocupaciones. 49% de lo que hicimos para reducir los costos fue despedir muchos de los trabajadores. Lo que queríamos es no convertir nuestra ciudad en un desierto sin escuelas. Muchos estaban pensando que la escuela Franklin iban a cerrar. Pero por fin seramos mejor una escuela en mi distrito donde yo vivo. Y fue algo que era para lo mejor de Hammond. Lo que queremos es dejar de perder estudiantes, pero no podemos saber hasta que lleguemos al próximo año cómo se ven los números.
How about we just go down the line this way? Yep, Lizette, your next.
I believe in order to build an effective cost-saving plan, I, I actually, I included a variety of things. I would, I would encourage us to get to know the census day, the census days. And make sure the students are in attendance on those days because that's how they count at state level for enrollment. And I believe the fall census day was October 1st, that just passed. Lending and leasing spaces in the facilities. Uh, for example, Hammond Central. We can generate some extra funds by lending, uh, or leasing some of the facilities to some of the community and, and gather some funds that way. Uh, we can also incorporate the parent and community volunteers. That's something that we've always tried to encourage. And being resourceful, energy efficient, taking advantage of the energy cost savings that, um, are some opportunities, I believe, offered by NIPSCO. And maintain a well-to, a well-maintained budget. Becoming familiar with the investments and knowing where the money is flowing to and from. Uh, it's, uh, it's, that's the best way to develop a cost savings plan, is to manage a good budget. And last but not least, keeping our most essential staff onboard. Um, that's another cost-saving measure that I would encourage.
Lo que necesitamos es un plan de ahorros de dinero. Este día que cuentan los niños deben estar presentes en la escuela para que los pueden contar bien. Apenas pasó hace en octubre primero cuando contaron los niños. Hay muchas cosas que podemos hacer para ayudar a recoger fondos para la escuela. Podemos rentar las áreas en nuestras escuelas a la comunidad y ofrecerlos a un costo. Debemos de tomar los ahorros que nos ofrecen NIPSco para que nos pueda ayudar con esos costos de, de la gas y la luz. Y más bien, debemos de mantener y quedarnos con el plan del dinero que tenemos para navegarlo. Si nos mantenemos así y podemos mantener a nuestros maestros y otros empleados que son certificados, es lo que nos va a ayudar a ahorrar dinero más.
All right, Pedro, go ahead.
Like I said, the last school board meeting, they said the money follows the child. And the last, from the board, they put, was like over 600 students? Last, last time, 600 students? 642. Well, like I went up and said, the state was giving vouchers. And it's, um, 400 times to qualify for free lunch is what they're doing. So the qualification to qualify, you make $51,300. And I think so, what it said on the, on the website was, if you made under, if you made $204,000 or underneath that, you will qualify to be able to put your son out and get one of these vouchers to take him to a charter school or Catholic school, whatever. So these, when this started many years ago, it started like $80,000 or $75,000 around there. It has more than doubled. And I don't know when this number changed, but if these numbers change, the parents that are close to that are seeing that. So we don't know how many more students we're gonna lose. So how are you gonna prepare for a budget right now that might be shorter next year? Unfortunately, our kids are the ones that are gonna suffer. And like I had said, what we need to do is try to make the state give us, let us keep some money for each child that they take. Cause they're already registered in our school because it affects the, what other children receive as well for services and things like that. So maybe we should go down there and fight the state and tell them, "Hey, if you're taking away the student, at least give us $500" or, you know, ask for a thousand so at least we could get half. And maybe we could get some income that way. The other, another thing, maybe, um, be more transparent if we do another referendum for the, uh, community. I'm sure if we're more transparent and the residents see, because a lot of people say, "Our children's our priority." If our children's our priority, they might, aren't the teachers paid good like they're supposed to, like other communities? So don't say one thing and then we ask you for a quarter or something like that, then, you know, "Hey, hey, hey, no." If, let's put our money where our mouth is and let's be transparent where the money's gonna go and the money that, that we need. And we also have to go up there as a, as a community and let the state legislators know how they're damaging our students. And like I said, every, it could change. So I can't say something now because the budget numbers are gonna change. They're not gonna be separate. But my, my goal is to work with the community and look at the main problem. Our main problem is that we're losing our money. And we need to let our legislators know that the ones suffering are children and our teachers. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sabemos que el dinero sigue el estudiante aquí en Indiana. Lo que supimos cuando contaron los estudiantes fue que perdimos cuatro, 642 estudiantes este año escolar. El estado estaba dando becas para los padres que hacían menos de 240 mil dólares. Y los podían usar a ir a escuelas charters, escuelas privadas, a donde quieran además de escuelas públicas. Los padres en la comunidad están mirando y están pensando lo que necesitan para su estudiante tener éxito en este país. Necesitamos hablar con el estado, a ver si nos pueden dejar un poco de dinero cuando se van un, un estudiante, aunque nos den un mil y ya nos ayuda con un poco de esos costos cuando se van los estudiantes. Hay que ser más transparente y honesto con la comunidad, por ejemplo, con el referendum. Queremos saber dónde se va el dinero y cómo se está usando. Necesitamos dejarles saber a nivel estatal que las decisiones que están tomando en congreso nos están lastimando a los estudiantes aquí en Hammond. Y si no vamos para allá, nos van a tomar en cuenta.
Thank you. Miss, you have your next?
Alright, like I said, I prefer the answers for these. So part of cost-saving measures is taking into account where the money is going. So my first step would be to see what we are currently paying for that is not necessary or not currently working for our staff and students. My next step would be to see what necessary costs could be reduced by looking at lower-cost options. Once those necessary steps have been taken, I would look into other funding options. You can only cut so much, so I would like to focus next on how we can increase enrollment. We need to improve our student's school experience, and that starts with asking questions. We need to know what we can improve that would make our district desirable to parents. We then need to work on making those improvements. From the conversations I've had with parents who have removed their students from our district, I don't believe every necessary improvement is financially motivated. We can start with those improvements to ensure that we don't continue to lose students.
Necesitamos ver nuestras opciones, a ver cómo bajar el costo. No más podemos cortar una parte, no más. Lo que, necesitamos trabajar juntos para subir el desarrollo de los estudiantes. Qué podemos hacer mejor para hacer este distrito más coincidir con los, especialmente, los padres de los estudiantes. Porque yo creo que no todas las decisiones son motivadas financias, como de dinero o finanzas. Por eso, estas son las cosas que yo pienso que necesitamos hacer.
Alright, Evangeline, you're up.
Although enrollment is down and the referendum is ending, we can't just look at costs. We have to determine how we're gonna get more income, more money into our district. We're gonna prop, it would be advantageous, depending on who gets elected in our state, we might be able to get more Title I money. We need to get some grant writers. We need to look at different avenues of bringing money into our city. As far as cost is concerned, I have a bachelor's of science in accounting, and I can't even begin to tell you how we're going to adjust costs if I don't know what's going on now. I would have to actually see what the current budget looks like and how the budget is being utilized before a decision can be made on what changes are possible in order to reduce the expenses in our district. Trying to make a decision on that without knowing what is currently going on, for me, is impossible. My detail-oriented accounting brain says, "I can't tell you unless I know what is currently going on." I do think that there are probably ways that we can reduce our costs, because currently, I don't think there is a budget going on. When we're losing teachers and we're closing schools and we're still over ten million dollars in the hole, when I go to a school board meeting and see those financials, I'm not seeing a budget working. Maybe there's an attempt, but I don't know where that money coming back from closing schools and letting go of teachers is going. I don't see that budget changing from month to month when I go to the meetings. We're still the same amount in the hole. So I'm sure there are a lot of changes that need to be made, and I plan on focusing on that when I make it to the board, I hope.
Yo sé que el desarrollo de los estudiantes está bajo. Yo sé que va a acabar el referéndum. Lo que, no, lo que quiero hacer yo es ver cómo podemos traer más dinero a nuestro distrito. Lo que necesitamos son escritores de subvenciones. Necesitamos diferentes formas de entrada de dinero. Necesito ver el costo. Qué está pasando con nuestro dinero? Cómo se está alocando? Yo tengo un bachillerato en accounting. Contabilidad. Mi cerebro como trabaja, yo no puedo decirte cómo arreglar lo que está pasando sin verlo enfrente de mí. Yo necesito ver cómo está llegando el dinero, cómo se está alocando, y cuáles cambios necesitamos reducir, si necesitamos reducir en algún lado. Dónde estamos gastando ese dinero? Por qué nuestras maestras están yendo de nuestro distrito? Por qué? Porque hay una comunidad que necesita... Yo como, como sé de contabilidad, sé que puedo alocar eso y viéndolo enfrente de mí puedo hacer algo para la comunidad.
Dependiendo de quién lo dije al nivel estatal, podemos darnos más cuentas y nos pueden dar más dinero con título uno. Pero cuando yo veo lo que está pasando en las juntas del school board y que hicieran las escuelas y que le escriben a maestros, lo que yo llevo a la conclusión es que el plan no está sirviendo, y quiero crear un plan que sí va a servir.
Thank you. So, everybody wanted to first run that one, so we don't need any final thoughts. So let's move on to our third prepared question from the community members. What will you do as a member of the school board to streamline operations, avoid initiative fatigue, and refocus on the needs of students, teachers, and families?
Qué harías como un miembro de la escuela para facilitar operaciones, evitar fatiga de la iniciativa, y reenfocar las necesidades de estudiantes, maestros, y familias?
Those are just little things that we could do in order to, you know, let's get the teachers smaller classroom settings, the support that we need, less administrative staff at the top. I don't think principals need as many assistants as a teacher might need. So I would like to bring that right on back to where it belongs, right to the students. And then we will be eliminating the stress, because the stress is on the teachers, and the teachers don't need to be stressed. Otherwise, our children are not going to learn. So, let's start there. Thank you.
He not, he notado que no tenemos medidas preventativas para mantenimientos y para los costos de la escuela. Necesitamos mantener un plan de dinero que es bueno y que beneficia a los estudiantes, que realmente mira las fortalezas que tiene el estudiante y llevarlos al éxito. Queremos ayudar primeramente también a los maestros. Hay que hacer cosas antes de que pase y no cuando pase. Eso no es un plan. Queremos apoyar a todos los maestros, a todos los de la limpieza, y a todos los que trabajan con los estudiantes para su salud y bienestar. Queremos ver menos directores y mover esos dineros para los maestros para que no se estresen más de lo que ya están. Necesitamos tener este plan ahora.
Cindy?
Avoid initiative fatigue. And that is tough to do when the state changes the standards at least every other year. And you have to adopt science of reading, that's one of the new initiatives. The state is also literally changing when standards are taught during the year. So with our, especially with our elementary, they get tested three times a year. So I'm a real linear thinking person, because I'm math and science. You start on page one, you go to page to three fifty. But that's not what our teachers can do anymore. I'm doing chapter one, chapter seven, chapter twenty-six, and then I'm jumping back, because this is gonna be done in the first test. And the next test, I'm gonna be doing these other chapters. And the parents are like, "What is happening here?" Because I can't follow along with you, because the state's messing up in that. The curriculum maps. I have been going to school board meetings since the late nineties, and at least every other year, someone probably stands up and says, "We did curriculum mapping over the summer." And I'm like, "What? Didn't you just do curriculum mapping two years ago? What a waste of time and money for our teachers." They headed down. But no, the state doesn't trust our teachers at all. And they think they need to mess with this stuff all the time, because they know better. Science of reading. "What's that," you ask? "It's pretty much phonics." And I turned around and I said, "When did we stop teaching phonics?" "Oh, let's go back to the states." "No, we're going to go do this initiative and that initiative, and now we come back to the one that was working great when my children were going to school." "Why did we ever leave it?" That goes into Alex and the widget diploma, the ACC. So our kids are going in for two-year programs, welding, HVAC, construction trades. "Oh, you don't get two years anymore, you get one year." You get a little bit of taste, because we think in one year, you can go out there and go do these. Initiative fatigue, you can't get past that because of the stupid state. Am I close? Alright, I'm gonna give up there and do that stuff. Okay, thanks. Beto, you wanna, okay, two minutes, Beto.
Oh, so sorry. I was so excited.
Evitar cansancio de la escuela. Es muy difícil ahorita. El estado ha empezado a adoptar la ciencia de lectura. A lo mejor tú piensas que es eso. Bueno, ahorita voy a hablar más de eso. Pero primero quiero hablarles de lo que pasa con los estudiantes. Ellos toman una prueba que necesitan cumplir tres veces al año. Y entonces los maestros están brincando en su currículo a esta página y a esta página, porque va a estar en la prueba. Y entonces ya no están enseñando el currículo, están enseñando para la prueba. Los mapas del currículo es algo que se hace para planear el año escolar. Cada año, se escucha que planearon otra vez una nueva mapa. ¿Por qué están cambiando el plan cada año de año? Deben de estar haciéndolo no tanto así. Lo que sabemos es que el estado no tiene la confianza a nuestros maestros para hacer su trabajo profesionalmente. Iniciativa tras iniciativa, nos ha traído a donde estamos en momento, un enfocado desenfocado. Grupos como el, esto de la diploma, los de estudiantes que van al ACC. Se van a ver todos estos impactos si siguen así. Antes les daban dos años para cumplir sus metas en el ACC para los estudiantes de empezar su carrera técnico. Ahora el estado quiere hacerlo en un año. Es imposible enfocar todo lo que era de dos años en un año. Y hay mucha más que podemos decir tras de eso, pero aquí dejo mi tiempo.
Alright, now you get two minutes.
Well, next to my opinion, like I said, the state has certain things that they need done for the year. The teachers have certain things, the students have certain things. I think we need to get together, and like I said, everybody has, everybody should be able to participate, and we're gonna change something in the curriculum. Have everybody involved, why and how it will affect everybody. Because when we think, if you leave one person out, you think it doesn't affect them, it will affect them. So, I just, like I said, everything's gonna be changing every year. We're gonna focus on what we're gonna be able to do, what the state's gonna require, what the children need to get to that level. There's not children to that level, at that level yet, because every child's different. So I believe there has to be more communication before the school year starts so that we could be able to make sure everybody has the tools that they need to be able to have a successful year. And hold the teachers accountable and hold the students accountable. Hey, we have to go a certain pace. If they need help, let's get them the help. If they're not willing to put their effort, then I'm sorry, we can't let other, some students, you know, suffer for other students if they don't want to. If they want to, and the thing's there, then we need to help them out, because every child is different. But at the end of the day, we all need to get to these same goals so they could be able to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lo que yo quiero decir es que hay que involucrar a todos, aunque unos piensan que no les va a afectar. Si nos afecta todo cada decisión. Cada año cambian el plan. Y necesitamos que saber qué quiere el estado. No todos los estudiantes están al mismo nivel cuando empiezan, pero necesitan llegar al mismo nivel cuando acaba. Queremos ver más, mejor comunicación entre la comunidad, los padres, maestros. Queremos tener las herramientas listas para usarlas a nuestras decisiones disponibles. Hay que tomar todo en accountability. Si uno falla, es ese que le toca, de estudiante, maestro, y de padre. Lo siento, pero no todos los estudiantes deben de estar sufriendo porque unos están sufriendo o no están llegando a sus metas.
Alright. We have two more questions left, are the ones that the community developed ahead of time. Then we go to the floor questions. So, question number four. The Indiana State Legislature passed a law that allows for the hiring of chaplains in public schools without defining required qualifications. What is your opinion on the placement of chaplains in public schools? Who wants this one? First run. I think Cindy? Okay, I just wanna give the names of Cindy, Evangeline, Miss, everybody, was that? Okay, okay, cool.
La legislatura pasó una ley que permite contratación de diáconos sin definir las calificaciones requeridas. ¿Cuál es tu opinión sobre la colocación de diácono en nuestras escuelas públicas?
Alright, this one had to do some research on. And it looks like that language actually got stripped. I got this out of NPR Indianapolis from March article. The chaplain language was recently removed from the Religious Education Bill by a bipartisan committee after disagreement between the House and Senate. The bill that passed both the House and Senate only includes language about releasing students from school for religious instruction. So that is Indiana Code twenty-three-three-two-nine-teen, attendance, public school children, religious instruction, which states, "When a parent of a student who is enrolled in a public school provides written notice, the principal shall allow the student to attend a school for religious instruction that is conducted by a church, an association of churches, or an association that is organized for religious instruction, and incorporated under Indian law." If it had passed, the easy answer is, "School City of Hammond can't afford them." If I could afford a chaplain, I would rather bring back a custodian or someone else that got ripped last year. So, no, they're not gonna be here. Thank you.
Could you tell me the code one more time, so I can be told and look it up?
Seriously? It's a little too fast, Cindy, it was too fast.
Nineteen? Nineteen what? What was the code? I'm sorry.
Three, twenty-three-three-two-nineteen.
En la ley estatal, que querían pasar, era, lo puedes buscar en línea, del Congreso del Senado de Estado de Indiana, de ley veinte punto treinta y tres punto dos punto diecinueve. Y fuera para darle instrucción religiosa a los estudiantes de padres que quieren darles instrucción. Si pasaría eso, la ciudad de Hammond de escuelas como quiera no tiene dinero para agarrar un diácono así. Lo que yo prefiero es usar ese dinero para regresar los que hacen la limpieza mil veces antes de agarrar un diácono para ese propósito.
Alright, who's that?
With regards to the Hammond...
With regards to the Hammond, to the hiring of the chaplains, I did read a little bit on how they were possibly gonna allow them to get services for two hours a week and such. I'm not, I'm not for that either. I don't even know that that's constitutional. But, um, like Cindy said, it's not gonna fly. We need custodians, we don't need chaplains. It's a public school. And so as much as I have my beliefs to impose our beliefs in a public school, it's just not feasible. It's not, it doesn't make any sense. So, um, I, I, I don't understand that law at all and I'm not for chaplains in schools. Thank you.
Uh, lo que yo he leído de esta ley es que le dará dos horas de instrucción cada semana a esos estudiantes de los padres que quieren instrucción religiosa. Y yo no pienso que en las escuelas este tiene ningún lugar. En una escuela pública, lo que sí necesitamos es tener más trabajadores de limpieza al momento y maestros.
Alright, I think you wanted this one too, right, Beto?
Yeah.
Okay.
Same thing, I mean, like I said, it's a public school. There's different kids with different beliefs and parents with different beliefs. And we gotta respect each other's beliefs. And I wouldn't want somebody imposing my son on something else. So I would totally be against this. Even, uh, like they said, we need other help, maybe, you know, with the way things are going on with the schools, maybe even like if they had some type of people, somebody's gonna be a psychologist, maybe, that needs community service hours. Maybe have somebody like that, that's more universal and not gonna impose certain things to help the children that may need help, maybe that route. But I don't think any chaplain or type of religious to be respectful to everybody. Thank you.
Entre la escuela pública hay diferentes religiones. Hay diferentes formas de centrarse o de, de lo que hacen religiosamente adentro de su propia casa. Yo, por ejemplo, con mi niño, no me gustaría que trataran de enseñarle algo que yo, yo le enseño en la casa, algo diferente. Prefiero mejor que traigan, por ejemplo, un psicólogo que necesita horas comunitarias o como un consejero para los estudiantes, algo más universal que no está imponiendo una religión que no se, no se practica en la casa. So no, no estaría de acuerdo con la diácono en la escuela.
Let me see if I get some turn.
Alright, not to sound like a broker record. Um, I do have this one written out, but I'm gonna go off of it a little bit as well. So, my original answer, if you are referring to House Bill 1137, that law did pass, but not with the original language. Um, it is my understanding that they removed the language you are referring to, whoever answered, whoever asked this question. Um, it now only allows a student to attend religious instruction conducted by certain entities, this is the exact language. It allows the student to attend religious instruction conducted by certain entities following the principal's receipt of written notice from the student's parents. The way that I understand this, the purpose of this, um, is to make religious instruction and excuse absence from school, but I'm willing to dig deeper into this. Now, as for the language that was changed for the chaplain, to kind of piggyback off of what Cindy said, they would only be allowed to offer secular, um, help anyways. So, I'd rather have a custodian than somebody that is a chaplain but can't even help in that respect anyway. As for the actual question, like the set said, I have my own beliefs, but I also believe in the separation of church and state. We shouldn't be pushing any of our personal beliefs onto our kids. Um, leave that for outside of school.
Este, lo que yo, lo que define esta, esto, lo que quieren pasar, básicamente, lo que quieren hacer es introducir la instrucción religiosa para poder, uh, ausentarla cuando la gente necesita días libres, por ejemplo, por algo sobre la religión, cualquier religión que está, que para poder hacer dos, una excusa sin aumentar con los días que ya tienen, que los, el límite de días es para poder escusar, para poder escusar eso. Y dicen que sería algo secular. Básicamente, no es de, no una religión. Es como un basado, uh, que puede a cualquier religión sumeterse con el permiso de sus papás. Pero yo creo que debemos separar lo que es el estado, lo que es la iglesia, la educación de religión. No estoy de acuerdo que traigan esto, prefiero que traigan más gente de limpieza o otra cosa.
Alright, I'm last. I, also, I agree with Missy on this. I grew up with the separation of church and state, but things in this state keep changing. So hopefully this will not become law, but it sounds like since they can only be a secular chaplain without the approval of the parent to be anything else, that sounds a lot like a counselor to me. So I'm not sure why we need a secular chaplain, someone else to pay. Thank you.
Ojalá que no pasen este cosa porque yo tampoco estoy de acuerdo con lo que quieren pasar de traerlos diáconos a las escuelas.
That was very concise. An English change finish. Uh, last question, this prepared question, then we're going to the floor. Uh, we haven't received any, like, questions for candidates on the livestream, just more people having technical discoveries. Uh, the state, the Indiana State Legislature now requires schools to allow children to leave school for religious education. What liability issues, if any, do you anticipate? Who wants this first reading? I see Evangeline, I see Missy, I see Cindy, I see Beto, I see Lizette. Okay, we're all doing it. Okay, guys. Uh, who is, I, I guess Evangeline's gonna start us off again. She has the reading.
Thank you.
You did ask us to be here.
I did.
Okay. Uh, la legisladora, legisladora del Estado de Indiana ahora requiere que las escuelas dejen a los estudiantes, uh, tiempo libre, excusada para religión, bueno, educación de religión. ¿Cuáles asuntos de responsabilidad creen o anticipan por dejar los diáconos en la escuela? Por sacarlos de la escuela.
There we go.
Certification achieved. Okay, so, Evangeline, I think it's your turn. Okay, I read this one as well, and I think it's up to two hours a week that students can be, um, taken out of school for religious education. I'm not sure how that's any different than a doctor's appointment or family's going on vacation. So I don't see any liability being anticipated here.
Y lo que yo sé de esto, de que quieren darles dos horas por semana para darles su educación religiosa, ya tenemos estudiantes que pierden escuela para cuando van al doctor, cuando van a citas, cuando van de vacaciones. Y no hacen esa misma pregunta para eso. Yo veo que los riesgos son muy bajos en lo que estamos pensando de esto.
Alright, Missy, take it away.
Same, same as Evangeline. I don't anticipate any liability due to the fact a parent has to submit in writing ahead of time that their student will be released for religious instruction. Um, my only thing will be, I do understand that this could be abused for chronic absence if it's not monitored properly.
Yo no veo ningún riesgo de implementar esto en las escuelas. Lo que sí no quiero dar cuenta es que el abuso de las, de las dos horas, porque sin estar monitorando la familia, cómo saben que, o qué están haciendo en esas dos horas. Y eso es lo que yo veo todo de momento.
Alright, Beto.
I also feel the same way that the parents, they're gonna pull their child out of school for whatever reason, whether it's this or a doctor's appointment, whichever it is. They need to know what the student's gonna be missing out. If it's a test, if it's, you know, what's going on that day. And to make sure that they're able to make up the work. I mean, that's the parent's responsibility. But like you said, we give them now another opportunity for students to be able to get out, get out of the school. But it all comes down to the parents and the students being responsible.
Yo siento lo mismo de lo que están haciendo los, diciendo los otros candidatos. Los padres a lo mejor van a empezar a sacar sus estudiantes por cualquiera cosa. Pero si van a estar haciendo eso, los padres necesitan ser responsables para hablar con los maestros y la escuela de lo que pierden los estudiantes en clase ese día. Qué tareas necesitan cumplir, qué pruebas necesitan hacer. Que cuando los padres se firman a la escuela, firman un convenio que están de acuerdo que eso es parte de su trabajo de ser padre de nuestra escuela. Y hay que mantenerlos a esa convenio que hicimos.
Alright.
What liability issues do I anticipate? I, with the consent of a parent, I would assume that there would be no liability placed on the school. However, I do believe that this would, would be abused. And loss of instruction in public school should take a priority. But again, everybody is, you know, like a doctor's appointment, just like they said. If the parent feels that they should have two hours a week to go for religious instruction and that's beneficial, then that is the choice of the parent. Thank you.
Con el consento de los papás, yo no veo ningún riesgo en implementar esto. Yo creo, um, que con esto, lo que van a implementar, va a haber una pérdida de instrucción en la escuela. Y eso va a caer en los papás, ellos siendo responsables de qué están haciendo en estas dos horas de religión, de la instrucción. Y si es algo que escogen los papás, ellos deben de ser responsables y no abusarlo. Y, yeah, eso, seré.
Una cosa más también que dijo es que si los padres toman esto en cuenta y deciden de tomar esas dos horas, entonces la culpa no sería de las escuelas si el estudiante no está trabajando la manera que ellos deben de estar. Serían los padres ser responsables de la decisión que tomaron en ese momento.
Alright, go ahead, Cindy. Primero es la ley. First, it's, it's the law. So we're gonna have to comply with this. But that law is also very vague. And it's probably gonna be part of our new set of board policies that we've been getting, that we'll hopefully look at before the end of the year because we need some administrative regulations behind this. How is it going to work logistically? I see that schools that are gonna be able to do the religious instructions cannot be receiving public dollars. So one of the things when you talk about liability, is it gonna interfere with our ADM dollars? So by putting that into statute, that tells me, even though they might be losing a period of instruction, we still get the full ADM dollars for that student. Then it goes on to state that their attendance should be during regularly scheduled classes. So how is that gonna work? So is it the last class of the day? They're gonna get early dismissal, they're gonna go to this? And we have to count them as being present in that class that they're taking somewhere else. And the student can receive up to two elective classes. So where are they going with this? I believe we're looking for a new pathway. They're gonna put in a religious pathway. I bet we're going to be seeing some changes to the Indiana Course Catalog next year. They're going to add, because how can you get elective credit if it's not in the classes we're allowed to teach? So I'm thinking this is about adding a new pathway for our students in religious instruction. Thank you.
Lo que yo noto es que es muy impreciso las nuevas policías que van a implementar. No pueden recibir dólares que se alocan a ese estudiante, los ocho puntos, correct? Yes, eight?
Eight for each student? You said that there's eight points for each student, correct?
No, two elective credits.
No, 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 yes, eight.
A, ADM.
Oh, ADM, okay. Uh, puntos ADM que cada estudiante recibe. No deben de cambiar esos si van a implementar esto.
But si la escuela decide dar esas clases ellos propios, no les puede dar el gobierno dinero. Entonces el dinero se quedará con las escuelas y el estudiante se va a tomar sus clases religiosas en otro lugar. Lo que yo pienso es que a lo mejor lo quieren convertir en una clase electiva que los estudiantes pueden elegir ya en su secundaria. Pero lo que yo pienso realmente es que el estado quiere cambiar y hacer un nuevo camino de educación implementando esto. Es muy difícil a dar un diploma certificando de las clases que están tomando afuera de lo que tenemos el control nosotros. Entonces es lo que yo pienso que la estatal va a implementar esto en el católogo. Y nosotros como el board necesitamos que cumplir la ley, es nuestro trabajo. Queremos pensar cómo podemos planear esto antes de que pase en las escuelas si pasa.
Alright. Now I'd like to transition to our floor portion of things. If you have a question that you wanna ask the candidates, raise your hand. We'll come over to you. Come through the phone. Okay.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Domingo Cortés y tengo una pregunta para ustedes.
My name is Domingo Cortés and I have a question for you.
Tomando en cuenta que en Hammond hay una comunidad grande latina que no habla inglés, que ofrecen cada uno de ustedes para que los padres se puedan involucrar más en las tareas de nuestros hijos para que puedan alcanzar su máximo potencial.
Taking into account that Hammond has a very large Latina and Hispanic population that does not speak English whatsoever. What would you do so that?
What would you do so that the parents can involve themselves in the education of their children so that their children can reach their maximum potential of learning?
Okay, so who wants to take this one, show your hands. I see Cindy, I see Missy, I see Beto, I see Lizette, I see Wally, everybody. Okay, two minutes though, okay? Who has the mic in their hand right now, Cindy? Alright, we'll start from that end of the table then, thank you. Parents have the right at any time to ask for an interpreter. So if they're doing a parent-teacher call.
Before eight people can finish, now five or six.
Interpreter, we lost eight interpreters.
Yo entiendo. So again, so they can do those at times, so we can spread out those interpreters. For school board meetings, all you have to do is ask and we'll have an interpreter at those meetings. We just need at least 24 hours' notice. As you stated, we lost some, so we have to give them notice, whether it's ASL or it's gonna be for Spanish. I know some of the kids joke that my parents don't understand English, so I interpret how it works best for me. But that's not what we want to happen. So, yes, if you ask for it, you are entitled for it. And if you are not getting those services, please let the school board know. Because we will go and look up into that. Because every parent in Hammond, no matter what language it is, they deserve the services they need to be able to speak with administration or their teachers or understand what's going on at the school board. Thank you. Go ahead. Oh, okay, translators. Sorry, too many moving parts.
Lo que sí podemos hacer al momento es dar interpretes. Pero te voy a decir claramente que necesitamos saber adelante del tiempo, por lo menos 24 horas. Nos deja buscar alguien para dar interpretación a lo que estamos diciendo. Yo sé que en el pasado los estudiantes han dicho que mis padres no entienden nada, solo hablan español. Pero eso no debe de estar pasando. Si tú como padre preguntas, te lo debemos de dar en tu idioma. No importa cualquier idioma que tú hablas. Es la ley que tú debes de poder hablar con cualquier director elegido con la idioma que tú puedes hablarles y tener nosotros un traductor para ustedes.
Alright, Lizette.
With regard to your question about how the parents can be more involved with their children's academic success, being that they... I believe there are several dual-language programs too that might be able to help you. I'm trying to remember the name of the person, is it Andy? There's someone in the school in charge of the program? We could find out for you. But there is a lot of programs that are given grants even for the dual language. And if you're having a difficulty understanding something, there are resources in every public school in Indiana that can help parents, involve parents, educate parents, and then, because it's true, the more involved you are in the school, the more your child is going to succeed. Especially in elementary and middle school. So absolutely, I would say ask the school. I know that there are some dual languages, there are a lot of grants right now. And I believe the school city of Hammond is taking advantage of those. So anything, just get proactive. I'm trying to remember the guy's name, but I can't look up for it to see what they can offer.
De lo que dijiste de cómo los padres pueden estar más involucrados, hay muchas cosas que, muchos programas que debemos de estar diciéndole a la comunidad. Por ejemplo, el programa de dual lenguaje. Ese es un recurso que le damos a los estudiantes. Y hay muchos más recursos para ayudar y educar a los padres y a los tutores. Hay mucho dinero del gobierno que quieren dar para estos programas. La escuela de Hammond sí ha usado estos dineros del gobierno y los han manipulado para hacerlo mejor con lo que les dan para los estudiantes y los padres de los que hablan español.
Alright, Beto.
Alright, I believe what she had asked was that there was eight translators that were cut through the city and there's only three that were called back. And if those three, the three translators are enough for the whole city, school city, knowing that the large part of the community, the parents don't speak Spanish. And that's a concern with a lot of the parents, especially the elementary school level where you might have your older kids translating for the younger kids or something comes back from the teacher. Like I said, they're gonna translate the way to get the sibling in trouble. I believe that it's, like I said, every day's gonna be different challenges, we have to find different ways. We should have maybe a number for them to text or some type of information where they could automatically get some type of translation to refer to the problem that's going on with the school. Because if you have a translator in the school and it's a parent, a student, and a teacher involved, how are you gonna know they're gonna be translating and not going to the teacher's side versus the student versus the parent? So maybe we should have something that, a resource that they could go to when there's questions asked. Another thing that we used to have in the city was classes for the parents to start learning English. Unfortunately, that got closed. It was at the, we had when it has to, at the social center. Two days a week or three days a week where they invite parents and three days they learn the English and two days they learn the pathway to citizenship. Unfortunately, all that got lost after COVID. So maybe we could start looking at, maybe start bringing those type of services into the school to help the parents out as well. Thank you.
Lo que yo sé es que hay tres traductores para toda la escuela de Hammond. Y eso no es suficiente para toda la población que habla español. Más bien, los padres están diciendo estas quejas en las escuelas elementarias. Hay que implementar mejores ideas, como un texto que nos ayude a traducir para los padres, para los maestros y para los estudiantes. Hay que asegurar que las traducciones están realmente traducidas correctas. Porque hay muchas ocasiones en donde los estudiantes traducen para los papás y lo traducen de forma incorrecta. Hay que traer más de los servicios a las escuelas para los padres y dejarles saber que está pasando esta escuela. En tu idioma.
Oh, Missy. So for the original question about the translators, that's good for us to know when it comes to budget. I know, you know, we hear about the teachers a lot, custodians. It's good for us to know what personnel we need. So I appreciate the question. I know the dual-language program was also mentioned. Mr. Morales, who's over there translating, actually teaches second grade at Irving, which is our dual-language program. He could probably get you in touch with Mr. Salinas as well, who was the director that Wasette was mentioning. Ms. Sanchez over there is also wonderful. This office staff over there is also excellent. Something else that I know that was mentioning, there is actually a program for adults learning English at the ACC. I spoke with Mr. Hicks about that this week. He is the director, the principal at the ACC. So you can get his information or if you need it, I'm willing to help you out with that. It's also on the School City website. That's one thing that I have a question about, School City website. I know a lot of times when you're on your phone, you can hit the translate button, but it would definitely be good to have inclusion there as well. There was something else I was gonna mention. Oh, the buildings. So we have 13 schools open right now, not including the Early Learning Center. Including that, we have 14. And we have two that are non-active school buildings, but they're used for like the Welcome Center and the Admin Building. Of those 16 buildings, I've only been in two. I've been in all of them, but of all 16 of them, I was in all of them this week. And only two of them, I'm not quite sure if there's somebody in the office who speaks Spanish. All other 14 buildings, I am positive that somebody in that office speaks Spanish. I heard them, most of them speaking it at one point when I was there. So if you have any questions, the office staff in those buildings are wonderful and they will answer any questions you have. Definitely though, the translators, thank you.
I'm sorry, can I say something for, what she said real quick, just 30 seconds?
No. That's not part of the rule. You can save that for your 10 minutes at the end, right? You get 2 minutes at the end, buddy. No, 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 no. Oh, no, sir. Translation time.
I think what's happening is that we see the problems in the community and they kind of, just kind of wants to chat.
Cuando estamos tomando en cuenta los costos, hay que pensar en los traductores también como pensamos en los maestros. Gracias por esta buena pregunta. Acá está traduciendo el señor Morales, que da clases de primer grado en la escuela de lenguaje de Irving. Te puede poner en contacto con señor Salinas, que es el director del programa de idiomas de inglés. Hay muchos programas que hemos tenido aquí en la escuela, como en el ACC, hay programas para los adultos. Pero sí hay cosas que podemos mejorar. En el sitio de School City de Hammond, hay traducción a su lenguaje. Pero hay que hacer más para incluir a todos de la comunidad ahí. Yo visité a todas las escuelas, los 16 edificios que tenemos. Dos de las escuelas están sin uso. Pero de todas las escuelas, yo pienso que solo dos en la oficina no tienen alguien que habla español. La mayoría de las escuelas sí tienen aunque sea una persona que habla español en la oficina. Y también hay que darle recompensas a ellos a lo que deben por su esfuerzo.
Okay, I'm assuming the eight translators we lost were during the current board. So I'm not sure what happened to them. But it sounds like we're very low on translators. And maybe that's something we, I think that is something we need to consider. I don't know, do they expect you to use a translator program on your phone instead of an actual person? I think a person is probably the better way to go. That technology is not always the answer.
Alright, thank you.
Los ocho que hemos perdido, necesitamos considerar por qué perdimos tantos. Traducir por tu teléfono solamente hace lo básico. Necesitamos una persona porque con una persona es más fácil hablar que con una computadora o con un teléfono. Necesitamos poner eso en consideración para el próximo año.
Okay, so we're running short on time and you know what that means. I'm gonna start restricting how many candidates can answer questions. Because now y'all wanna answer every single question, all of y'all. Yes. I see people.
There is a lack of respect and collaboration from 41 Williams directed at teachers, paras, aides, custodial staff, lunch staff, office staff, nurses, health aides, and anyone else that I have forgotten to mention. Do you have any ideas on how to repair that disconnect?
Alright, which two wanna take it, first two hands up, Beto, who else? I think I saw Missy, sorry everybody. Okay, Beto, go for it. Up, question.
Hay una falta de respeto de la administración de 41 Williams a los maestros, trabajadores de limpieza, de los de la cocina y cualquier departamento que hay en la escuela de Ciudad de Hammond. ¿Cómo podemos reparar esta relación entre administración y los trabajadores?
Alright, so Beto, I saw Missy, 2 minutes.
From the meetings that I went to and then after I reviewed and went through, there is a lack of respect and it's to go both ways. And also, your group like up here, right here, us fine. If we were the school board, we'd be a good school board. Why? Because we're all adults and we're all giving different opinions. We're concentrating on the children. When you have a school board that comes out and you see them on TV and then you see one of the members come down and go down there to try to even do certain things, it doesn't show unity. We're a board, we're gonna make our decisions together, so we need to show unity. Even though we do not agree, at the end of the day, we gotta do what's right for the children. If we do not show unity up here, you guys are not gonna trust us. And that's where I think the disrespect starts coming in and everything. And also, when the certain people come about money and they don't tell the community that the money was supposed to be used just for educators, that misleads the people too, thinking that certain people are giving raises and not other people. So we should, both sides come with, you know, all the information. Or when a kid gets hit by a car and everybody wants to come and bury them pretty much, the school board, when the kid went home and got a bike. Let's have our information straight first, you know? And all together, work as a unity and respect each other. Because there's always two stories to everything and we should see both sides.
Alright, translation.
De las justas que he oído, el respeto necesita ir de los dos caminos. Todos necesitamos estar concentrados en los estudiantes, así como estamos nosotros los candidatos aquí. Nos estamos dando respeto, dando ideas y enfocados en lo que es mejor para los niños. No nos vemos unidos cuando alguien viene y nos da palabra al board. No nos van a dar la confianza si siguen así. Pero hay que dar más comunicación y dar más claro lo que van a pasar con el dinero o lo que pasa cuando un niño le atropella a un carro. Lo que falta es dar el respeto de los dos caminos.
Missy, 2 minutes.
I could take 2 hours on this. First, I'm weird, okay? I believe respect should be given before it's asked for, but I only require that of myself. I don't require that of the people that I'm asking for respect. I think that for me personally, I give respect as much as needed. It's the same philosophy I have with my students when I was teaching. I didn't require them to show me respect. I needed to give them enough respect for them to finally respect me however long it took for that. The second part of that is listening, which is a lost art, I feel. You and I spoke outside. And it's that simple, even a 5-minute conversation of knowing what you're asking for and not, in addition to that, not taking advantage of your time. Not taking advantage of anything that you have to offer and giving that respect rather than asking for it first.
Yo me siento un poco rara para continuar esta opinión. Se debe dar el respeto antes de cualquier cosa. Yo cual era maestra, siempre le daba respeto a mis estudiantes, aunque ellos me faltaron el respeto. Les tomaba tiempo para darle respeto, pero llegábamos a esa meta. Lo que yo sé es que hemos perdido la habilidad de escuchar. Escuchar para entender, no para responder. No estamos tomando ventaja de nuestro tiempo con los estudiantes y solo estamos dediciendo a lo que pensamos que hacer.
Alright, thank you. I think we have a question here. No, I limited it to 2 people, I said, 2 people, get their hands up. We have 7 minutes and it was in the program. It was in the program for weeks. If we are running short on time, I will limit the number of candidates that can respond to a question because I'm not gonna limit audience questions. I mean, they shot their hands up first, I don't know what to tell you. To go with. The Olympics. I mean, you can duke it up up there for a minute, I don't know. I mean, you can duke it up up there for a minute, I don't know. Let's have the lady ask a question though, please, my goodness.
I'm gonna ask you, can you direct a question to one particular board? One particular candidate?
Yes, you can, you need to read the guide. Sorry. So, you can, they have the option of not answer, and anyone else can answer too. And simply raising hands, not raising hands.
Thank you. My question is directed to trustee Murphy regarding the interpreters, the issue of interpreters within our district. Certainly, everyone in this room should be aware of that the board, School City de Hammond, received over sixty-three million dollars and COVID S R two and three funds. That was for the loss of learning for our children. It also included allowable uses for additional programs that would help our Latino students and any other students that have special needs. As a board member, I continually pressed the board, including you trustee Murphy, for additional funding for that type of instruction for our kids. And the support did not come. So could you answer to the public now as to why, when I can continually ask, how much money is spent in tutoring? When, I can't think of her name, came and gave a report on the number of parents that attended the Hispanic group, and it grew from fifty to a hundred from my request. It could have been thousands, because we surely had sixty-three million dollars to go there. So my question to you, trustee Murphy, is why didn't you support me on that? Thank you.
Translation.
Mi pregunta es directamente para la deputada Murphy sobre los interpretes. Las escuelas de Ciudad de Hammond les dieron tres mil dólares para la pérdida de aprendizaje. Esas cosas significa que podríamos poner más programas para ayudar a los que hablan español y los niños que necesitan educación especial. Mi pregunta es, como deputada, cuando yo te pedí para más dinero para ayudar y soportar a los estudiantes, ¿por qué no me soportaste en ese momento?
Okay, two respond and shoot some hands up, please. Oh, you're on timeout, all of y'all on timeout? Nobody gonna answer? Okay, when I say read the things that are written and sent to you, I do mean it. Anyone can answer it, but there's only two of you that are gonna get it. Do you want it? Are you raising your hand? I can't tell. Okay, cool.
I need clarity, there was a lot of clarification. What is the actual question?
You had the opportunity to support spending additional dollars for Latino students and other students for special needs, and I don't recall that support there.
Okay, two minutes, you want it?
Well, special needs comes out of title dollars. So I'm not sure where that's coming into the S R dollars. The, and at many times, we could not hire the people we needed to. We tried to get counselors, we tried to get social workers. We actually could not get any social workers, because the state paid more than we were gonna pay. So we had to go and redo some classifications, lower the educational attainment people needed in order to get those special people in the classrooms to help out our students. So now I'm gonna do a fact check. So the S R dollars entered September 30th, 2024. They were all used properly. There was a seven thousand dollar raise for teachers that went in there, which took a big chunk of change. There was eleven points, eleven percent raise overall for everybody. And we did stipends all the time, so the money was used properly. There is nothing in there that the board did not approve as a whole. The things came from the administration, and they came back and said, hey, we need this. So yes, there was difficulty, we couldn't find the tutors. There was nobody out there. So that was one of the realities, and it was addressed at a board meeting, which said we could not find those people to do those type of things. So we spent the money on our teachers, and I don't regret one month penny of the money that we spent on our teachers. They deserved all of it for being with us during COVID. Thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna change the mics out real quick, because I realized the wrong one. Uh-oh, I'm getting... We answered, we had the wrong mic on the table. Okay, I think we had a question here, we had a question here. Yes, okay, good, okay. Cool. Oh shit, I answered, yes, you can.
La educación especial viene de valer el título que nos da el gobierno general, y no es el dinero de S R que nos dio para el COVID. Lo que pasó es que no pudimos encontrar y contratar los trabajadores sociales que queríamos agarrar, porque el estado les pagaba mejor. Se iban con los que pagaban mejor. Entonces, lo que hicimos para llenar esas posiciones es que bajamos los requisitos que necesita tener los trabajadores sociales. El dinero que agarramos de S R se usó bien. Recompensamos a los maestros de los que se quedaron. Les dimos dinero a las posiciones difíciles de llenar. El board hizo estas decisiones. No había tutores para contratar. Y yo no digo perdón porque le di dinero a los maestros que se quedaron cuando pasamos por el tiempo de COVID.
Cool, I think we have a question over here.
Okay, my answer probably will be very short from someone. As a resident of Hammond, I'd like to know how many school age, kindergarten through twelve, children live in Hammond this year? How many of those children attend Hammond schools? And if they don't attend Hammond schools, what percentage are being homeschooled, in Catholic schools, or in charter schools? Thank you.
Alright, two hands, who wants it? Cindy, anybody else? Nope? Okay, translation.
And Missy also, Missy shot her hand up.
Como residente, queremos saber qué es el número de estudiantes de niños de la edad de ir a la escuela que vive en Hammond. ¿Cuántos de estos niños van a las escuelas de Hammond? ¿Cuántos están dando clases en casa? ¿Cuántos van a escuelas privadas? Queremos saber estos números como residentes.
Alright, two minutes. I cannot give you this year's numbers.
¿Están estando clases en la casa? Yo te puedo dar más información de esto después en un enlace, donde puedes ver todos los datos del estado para que tú puedes ver tú mismo qué está pasando con estos estudiantes.
As you guys know, and I've been translating, and you see me here, I did very briefly mention that I work in ESL. And me and him have been chatting, actually, secretly in our ears as we're doing this. As you see, this is a lot of work. It is a lot of work with me and him. We've been translating as we've been writing, writing as we're translating. Also, there are words that don't, diaccono? You should see what, go ahead, try to Google translate. Wrong, absolutely wrong. But working in ESL, we are severely under-stacked. I'm letting you know that. We can't even get someone to come and interview to be a para. It is me and another teacher, and we take care of the whole elementary school from K through five. What is happening now is an influx is coming in. We have kindergarteners who do not speak white lick of English. Not one. Who do they see? Ms. Claudia, Ms. Claudia, Ms. Claudia, Ms. Claudia. As soon as they walk through the door, they have a familiar face, somebody that they can confide in, that they can talk to. Because I've had students literally cry, 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 why? Yo quiero regresar a Honduras, me quiero regresar a Colombia, me quiero... Because they don't feel, like, what's happening now is we're having to pair the students with other Spanish-speaking kids in their class just so they're comfortable. There is not enough ESL staff. There is not, in any district. Because just me and him just doing this, this is a lot, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, like, and my school, I've done, I do conferences, I've done parent-teacher conferences. So my question is to you guys. Now, hearing from someone who speaks in the ESL program, and having had, you know, just a side conversation with him about how this is functioning, what will you guys do to allocate more funds into this program? Because it is, when I tell you that the influx, especially since from Venezuela, they're coming this way. Oh, and I see it, like, some, one of the teachers said, oh, whoa, job security, Ms. Claudia. I said, well, they're not paying anymore. I'm doing parent-teacher conferences. Anytime they call me, Ms. Claudia, oh, can you please, oh, thank you so much. Isn't only enough thank yous that can get, I'm overworked. I'm overworked, and so I know, how can you guys address that moving forward?
Okay, Suzette, it's a bit of...
Well, first of all, when I was growing up, my dad had a great idea that he was tired of the United States. So when I was in first grade, I went to Mexico. I was there for four years, came back. When I was in fifth grade, didn't know lick of English. But I was fortunate that I had family members here. My hardest thing to learn the language and go to the schools, like we said, was transitioning with the students. The students were making fun of my shoes, were making fun of my clothes. This is me personally, I'm talking about back in the days. So that was harder for me, you know? Till I had somebody that stood next to me, be, hey, leave him alone, you know, this, you know? So I understand what these kids are going through. So not only in the schools, but outside the schools. We gotta give them the resource, the clothing, the, you know? Whatever they're gonna need, the tablets or whatever, we gotta give them the technology too, that they're gonna need, the Wi-Fi. You know, it's, we need to find the source. Like I said, there has to be some type of grant or something. If the federal government's bringing them over here, we need to find and let them know what we need for these children. Yay, good, you know, you wanna bring them over, bring them over here. But we need help too, you know? And I'd say, I lived this, so, same thing, my son, my oldest son, that's in the university right now, when he started at Harding, he didn't know that much English. My wife would just talk to him in Spanish. And she said, they need to know both languages. Right now, he still speaks it kind of broken. And he's like, God, I can't believe that I didn't speak a lot of English when I went into, you know, I'm sorry. But just to let you know, yes, I lived it, I understand it. So we need to find the funds and help these children. Because there is more coming. I was in Mexico City last month, there's thousands of lined up.
Thank you.
Lo más que decir es que yo cuando estaba chico me llevaron a México cuando estaba en el segundo grado y regresé en el quinto. Mi problema no era aprender el idioma, era más cómo me trataban los otros estudiantes. Me hacían burla de mis zapatos, de mi ropa, de mi acento. Porque entre la misma gente de uno, ay, mira cómo hablas, tiene acento. Eso fue más duro para mí que aprender el idioma. Y yo creo que si tantos niños que están viviendo, lo está trayendo el gobierno, necesitamos buscar los recursos para ellos, para darles lo que ocupan de ropa, de tecnología, todo eso para que estén al nivel. Porque esos niños tienen una cabeza de esponja, pueden aprender. Pero si están teniendo problemas, cosas diferentes no lo van a hacer. Y se van a sentir que se quieren regresar, como dijo ella, a su país. So have to buscar los recursos y have to pelear. Como ustedes han estado peleando, quiero que tú digas cómo has peleado y hasta dónde hemos llegado, para que les digas gracias.
Two minutes, Suzette.
Claudia? What would we do to get the funding? So just today, I think I saw something from the Department of Education that there's some stuff available for refugees. There are some funds there. I think that we need to make sure that the funding is going exactly where it needs to be. I think you said you work at Nathan Hale? Whiting? Okay, I helped, I started there, helping the Spanish-speaking parents when my son was in fifth grade. He's a junior now. And they had that problem, translators. So we definitely need more people translating in those buildings. There's no exception there. I mean...
Oh, can I also say, can I ask, like, you have to, for example, I'm a dual-language meaning, I speak it fluently. We have Spanish-speaking teachers. They cannot do what you and him are doing. So guess who they call? Hold me out, remind yourself of it. Ms. Claudia, can you please do this? You have, you know, an intervention meeting for, you know, a speech. There is a seat power that's happening with this kid. The student only has...
Yeah, that's not acceptable, that's not... What I'm saying, like, well, that's the thing, the problem that's being encountered is that, not that we don't have dual-language teachers or dual-language personnel, we do. But like I said, what me and him are doing is totally different than just saying, oh... Because a lot of people that have been raised here, like Chicano's or whatever, lose the language. I have not lost it because my father does not speak English. My grandparents do not speak English. I came from Spanish-speaking people. I can speak to Dominga, like, if she's my best friend from Mexico. That is what's hard to find. Finding people like me and him, who not only write it, speak it, but can also relay a notion, who can also relay, this is what mom is feeling. Why, this is why I feel frustrated, because I can't communicate what my student is telling me at home. And it's much, it goes much further than, I understand, thank you for giving your personal example, because that's just the little things they go through. Because at one, I had a first grader today, his name is Jorge, from Honduras, and he said, he said, Ms. Claudia, because we had a little circle time, and I asked him, where's one place you would like to go? Anywhere in the world, do you know what the students from the other countries are saying? They wanna go back to their countries. Why? Why? Because they don't know, this is my daughter, really. Yes, they don't know why their parents brought them there. They don't know why all of a sudden... Me dice el niño Jorge, he says, he says, Ms. Claudia, ¿Es que aquí nadie habla español? Everybody speaks English. How can, how can a student like that, the cutest kid in the world, like, he's trying his best, he does his best, and in the short time that he's been here, he still feels outcast. And as much as warming, as we can put him next to dual-language speakers, we can, but you cannot, there's not, like, there's not twenty of him's, there's not twenty of me's, who have been raising the culture, you can understand. I was a five-year-old Jorge. I was a five-year-old Jorge. So my heart feels a lot different than just bringing somebody who just graduated from university and has Spanish-speaking parents, oh, really? But can you feel what these children are going through? Because it's, you're losing an identity. So it's an identity crisis that's happening, and that is what, that... How can you do like this every single day, sweetest children, you know? That as soon as I walk through, literally, Ms. Claudia, Ms. Claudia, and they call me by my first name. But I allow that, just because it just, it just goes, well, there's more Sanlualas, like, it makes me happy, because I'm like, oh, Sanlualas, Sanlualas, Sanlualas. I'm seeing it everywhere, right? There's also four Claudias in this school. So it's like, what, you know, which one am I picking? So I just left it on Ms. Claudia, because our front desk secretary is Ms. Sanlualas, and Christine and I are always getting confused, but... Yeah, that's just like a little short story that I can give you that's happening. Like, I'm telling you, you can choose any place to go, and you're saying you would rather go back to your own country when all the opportunities of the world are given to you here.
You're done? Okay, just wanna be fair, I did keep track. Do we want to attempt it between the two of you? You good? Okay.
Okay.
¿Qué hacemos para tener fondos? Es importante para ver que en el Departamento de Educación Estatal hay fondos allí. Necesitamos arreglar y a ver dónde va el dinero que usamos. Yo trabajé ayudando a traducir en los edificios por mucho tiempo y en el edificio de Nekuio donde estaba esta maestra.
Yo solamente dije un ejemplo, pero tengo varios estudiantes y hoy en una de las clases donde... Um, we pull, like, so just so you guys know how we do. We pull small groups and we also, um, push in. Um, we, we, it's me and Ms. Hobson, work the whole K through five. Um, so, like, when we were having a small group... Teníamos un grupo chico y cada viernes hacemos lo que es tiempo de círculo para aprender de nosotros, para sentirnos más como familia. Y hoy, yo, yo fui la que hice la pregunta que si hay algún lugar en todo el mundo que pudieras ir, ¿dónde irás? Uh, and various students answered, and a little boy from Honduras named Jorge said, le pregunté, ¿dónde, dónde te gustaría ir? Cualquier lugar, cualquier lugar de todo el mundo. Eh, y luego dijo, me gustaría regresar a Honduras, de donde es. Y cuando escuchamos eso como maestras, que en cuál forma podemos hacer que se sientan a gusto? Porque lo que está pasando no nomás es el ejemplo que, muchas gracias por, por lo que tú compartiste. Um, no nomás es lo que pasa. Allí también hay una crisis de identidad porque, uh, estos, ellos están... Los, los papás están viniendo para un, un sueño aquí, pero le están quitando todo. Ellos no saben nada más, ellos no más saben español y llegan aquí y dicen, pues, todos saben inglés. How, who did, who can they get along with? You know who they get along with? The, los, los otros niños que, que también saben español, los que están llegando. Entre ellos, no me puedo ir a sentar con él, no es mi amiga. Because it's the one of fifty kids that no, we're not, somos uno de cincuenta que, de veinticinco que saben español. No, nosotros tratamos de ponerlos juntos donde se sientan en la clase para que a lo menos tengan algo con quien para platicar, pero eso no está, no ayuda con lo que está pasando entre las familias, uh, tratando de ajustarse a nuestro sistema de educación. Porque Honduras, en México es totalmente diferente de lo que hacemos allá. Allá es cosa más familiar y trabajan muy, muy junto con la, con las familias. Y aquí eso es lo que, lo que falta, lo que yo trabajando en una escuela noto, uh, de los estudiantes. Ellos necesitan alguien que, quien puedan ver como madre, como papá, como alguien, alguien, tío, tía, lo que sea, que ellos puedan sentir a gusto hablar con ellos. Um, we're all questioned out? No, we have one more, okay. I think I can do this. Dangerous. I don't want answers to what I'm gonna ask you, but I want you to think about this. This is gonna be really important. Okay? So I have two... Can I please put three seconds of questions? Okay, I have two sons that are part of School City Hammond. With you being candidates, this is a big responsibility. Are you, are you able to do this responsibility? Are you able to attend all the school board meetings, all the extra meetings? You have, I think the parents of School City Hammond expect you to be there, to show up, to have your opinions. Are you ready to get along? Are you ready to deal with difficult people on both sides? Parents, anybody. Are you ready for that? That's a big responsibility, and I hope that you think about that. Because as parents, we expect a lot out of you. Okay, so technically, that was a question that was not elicited for an answer, yes, thank you. Uh, does anyone still wanna answer? Technically, according to my own rules, I have to ask, okay.
No quiero que responden, pero solo quiero que escuchen y que piensan. Como candidatos, están cierto que pueden hacer esto? Asistir a todas las juntas, ir a las escuelas, estar listos para navegar esos padres y personas difíciles. Como diputado, diputado, esto es lo que los padres queremos de ustedes.
Cool, so now I think we're questioned out. Um, y'all are entitled to your two-minute closing if you still wanna take it. I was gonna have a question, but you can simply reflect on it or, or choose not to in, in your two-minute closing, which is, you know, from the, from the coalition, what does real community inclusion look like? And that's just a, a thing you can choose to include or not include in your closings. And, uh, are y'all gonna play Roschambel for closing or what? Because I'm terribly unfair. Well, it's in front of Lizette. Lizette, take it away. Two minutes, Lizette. It's a, so, this is, this is, I'm... You have a two-minute summary? You can or cannot, if you like, reflect on in that, the idea of what is actual real community inclusion? Two minutes. You don't have to address that if you don't want to.
Community inclusion?
Yes, ma'am.
Community inclusion. I would, I would define community inclusion as including the community, right? We're, we're, we're lacking that. We're lacking that right now. There's no trust between administration and the community. And, and we need to rebuild that. So that's what I, I would say. I, I don't have any closing statements. It's pretty, let me pass it on to my fellow candidates.
¿Qué es inclusión de la comunidad? Yo lo defino como incluir la comunidad. Todos deben de tener su voz. Administración y la comunidad deben de tener su relación reparada.
All right, Cindy, take away, two minutes.
Hi, I'm Cindy Murphy. I'm running for school board. Please vote for me. Um, and the answer to the person's question before, yes. I attend all the meetings, whether it's mostly in person, sometimes virtual, and the trainings, that's the hardest part. This morning, I actually was an hour and a half with our CFO to get more information for the upcoming budget meeting. So that's part of being a school board member. I was late to work, but that's what's needed to do, things like that. Um, I wanna do a fact check in my remaining time. Someone said there's no measurable goals. Well, I have to say, oh, yes, there are. So we have a strategic plan that took over two years to do. And in that strategic plan, we had teachers, um, that were very dedicated, came to a lot of our meetings. We had community members. And that strategic plan is out there. It's got the measurable goals. Our teachers, of course, they have measurable goals. They know what they have to teach during the year. The ones that are in the K to six, they know they have three sets of testing all the time that's gonna come back and give them the feedback. The complaint about data at the meetings, well, not everybody has it on their fingertips. I received numerous emails with data, data and more data. So not, oh, do you want four-hour board meetings? I, three hours is enough for me. So we can't always do all this information at a board meeting. You elected people, you're going to elect people that need to do the job. And part of the job is getting the information, and it's not on board meetings, it's on your own time. Get the questions to the administration and learn about the subjects that you have to vote on. Don't abstain. It should be yes or no on the things. Get the information you need. So no, fact check. We do get the data and it's there all the time. Thank you.
Wait, oh, two minutes.
All right.
Shit, translation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hola, soy Cindy Murphy y quiero que vota, por favor vota por mí. Yo sí estoy en las juntas. Yo hago las tareas antes de tiempo y estudio lo que necesito estudiar. En veces hasta estoy tarde en mi propio trabajo. Quiero renunciar a unos hechos que han dicho que son falsos. Sí hay metas que hemos planeado con los miembros de la comunidad, los maestros y los directores de las escuelas. Ellos saben que tienen unas normas que necesitan cumplir y las pruebas que hacer tres veces al año. Lo que yo también quiero decir es que no necesitamos muchas más juntas. Tres horas es suficiente para hablar de esto. Tú elegiste personas para hacer el trabajo. Ellos necesitan hacer su tiempo, en su propio tiempo y hacer su tarea, sus trabajos, investigar. No empezar a discutir cuando empiezan las juntas. Ya deben de venir preparados.
Wait, two minutes.
All right, community inclusion, like, she said, I believe it belongs to, to involve everybody in the community and make all the community, um, comfortable. Uh, for myself, I belong in many groups, like that, I've, I work with the, um, ICHLA, NCRC, a part of the Human Relations. Um, I work with HC3 and I'm the president of HUGS Cultural Committee. And one of the things that people have brought to me was, why do we have so many Illinois plates? We need to get those people out of here. Well, let me just let these people know, it's not that these people live in Illinois. It's that these people cannot get a driver's license in Indiana and they cannot get an ID here, so they have to go to Illinois, but they live here. And she's been fighting that downstate so our students could have the right. And they don't feel threatened when they bring their kids to school because some parents don't have a license because of social security number. So they're scared, they get pulled over, they're gonna go to jail just to bring their kids to school on a snow day if somebody's gonna hit them. So that's one thing we need to be aware and, like I said, I've been involved with many communities. I'm involved all year round, every year, and I will be here every four years only when I'm asked for your vote. So thank you.
Missy, two minutes. Oh shit, translation.
Yo quiero incluir todos de la comunidad. Deben estar cómodos todos. Yo estoy involucrado en muchos grupos. Lo que la gente me dice de estos grupos es que hay muchas personas con placas indios viniendo a nuestras escuelas. Lo que no saben de la historia es que muchas de las personas que viven en el estado de Indiana no pueden conseguir su licencia de navegar y conducir. Tienen miedo de ir a llevar a sus estudiantes en la escuela, que una policía les va a agarrar y los va a detener. Tienen miedo de cuando hay nieve, que pueden chocar con otro carro. Hay este problema que los padres están sufriendo sin documentos. Les deben de dar documentos para ayudarles a llevar a sus niños a las escuelas y sentirse cómodos en su comunidad.
All right, Missy, two minutes.
I'll start with the community inclusion question, um, which starts with communication. Um, I'll tell you this, we had an instance with one of our kids, even as much as we are involved, um, who was in in-school suspension. And the only reason that we knew was because he was communicating, our, my husband was communicating with a teacher um, for something completely different. And when that teacher told him, hey, your kid didn't show up to class today, when he went up to the school and found out, hey, he's in the school suspension, nobody told us. Um, so that communication, I believe, involving the community, we are outright in the community and sometimes we still don't even get involved. Um, so I feel that and communication and making sure that all of those policies and procedures are in place and they are executed properly is very important. Um, and I think community inclusion can be seen in this event.
All right, Abengeline, two minutes.
All right, first I wanna talk about what I think my qualifications are. I do have a Bachelor's of Science in accounting and I have an MBA focusing in marketing, which I think would also be good for the board. We don't do enough about, with sharing positive information about our students and teachers. We need to do more of that. I think as a board member, board members need to get off the board and into the schools. They need to, they need to be meeting the teachers, they need to go to the events so that the children can see them there when something positive is happening. Everyone then will know who you are. They will be proud that you are there and that you care about what they're doing. I also think that, um, board members need to get out in the community and get people involved. When the board is developing goals, are they allowing the community to have any input at all? Not if they don't come to the board. Sometimes you have to go to them. We've gotta pull them in. We can't assume they're gonna come to the board meeting. We have to go and find them and get them involved. Once they're involved, they will be tied to those goals. And as Cindy said, there are goals and there is data. But when are the results of those goals and data shared with the community? How do they know if you're meeting or moving towards achieving those goals? That's what I don't see in a board meeting. I'm sure there is a lot of data, but nobody knows where it's going. Is it, are things getting worse or are things getting better? If you don't track them, you can't assume that they're gonna be achieved.
Quiero retocar sobre mis calificaciones. Tengo mi bachillerato de contar dinero y de negocios. Yo pienso que no estamos dando mucho tiempo para hablar de lo positivo, lo positivo que está pasando en las escuelas. Hay que dar esa información también. Como miembros del board, deben de ir a las escuelas para los eventos. Deben estar allí para que todos en la comunidad pueden ver que sí les importa lo que está pasando y que están ahí con ellos. Las metas que hacemos como un board debe de tener lo que la comunidad piensa de cuenta. Y si no está viendo la comunidad nosotros, nosotros necesitamos que ir a la comunidad. ¿Cómo sabe la comunidad si estamos logrando estas metas? Si se están cumpliendo lo que estamos diciendo. Debemos de comunicar esto mejor con la comunidad.
All right, thank you, everybody. I appreciate the candidates for being here. I appreciate everybody here. I especially appreciate the folks that came to interpret tonight. Um, and appreciate the folks at home. And, uh, we have another event coming up on the fifteenth. The one on the twenty-sixth, fifteenth is, uh, Central Hammond, uh, Aphelia Steen, uh, six PM. And, uh, we're still ironing out the details on the twenty-sixth, but expect to have ASL interpretation for that date at least. So thank you guys so much. I appreciate you guys. And, and, and we kept a poor man probably half an hour over when, when we were supposed to. So let's be mindful of any trash, anything we can do to make people's lives easier tonight. Please drive home safely. And, uh, take care of y'all. God bless.